To our regular scheduled city council meeting. It is 6:02 PM and I do call this meeting to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. If I could get everyone to rise and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those of you that are in the audience, we are going to go through a couple of our formality type things that we need to do and then we'll get to the most important part of the night, which would be the winners of the coloring contest. So we'll get there in just a few minutes. We'll have Sandy read our open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes. So the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And Sandy, would you please take a roll for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan. Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood. Gillian Peterson. And Eric Olson.
Here.
The present, we have a quorum.
Thanks Sandy. Moving on to the consent agenda, you have the consent agenda which is in front of you. It's actually on pages two through four of the packet that you have. And these are items that we will take one motion and one second on that and vote on those as one motion unless we have some individuals. So it's mine. Okay.
I think a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mayor, I would ask that item number one under D, license report be pulled off from the consent agenda.
Okay. I didn't get that far to... So we have a motion by Hackett and a second by Keeland that we approve the consent agenda. And before we had a chance to vote on it, Chief Koch has asked us to move letter D, which is the license report you're talking about. All three of those.
Just number one.
Just number one. Letter D, number one, be removed from the consent agenda and moved to the regular agenda. Steve, are you okay with that?
Yes.
And Alan?
I am.
Okay. So with that one change then, any other discussion on the consent agenda as it's printed?
I can mention that I distributed.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Do you want to put it as one of the...
Let's put it after the... Okay, we have that one item that was on the consent agenda. Let's move that to... Let's put it as number four under new business. That's all right with everybody? Okay, with that one change then, you have the regular agenda in front of you. Are there any other changes that council would like to see?
Mayor, I did distribute the police and fire commission minutes tonight, so they're on your desk.
Okay, so you do have a paper copy of the police and fire commissions minutes of their meeting and that is sitting right on top of your desk. Anything else? If there's nothing else, we'd be looking for a motion to approve?
Just a moment.
Second. A motion by Fenske, second by Keeland, that we approve the regular agenda with that one item that came off of the consent agenda plus the one handout that Sandy had mentioned. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, let's move on to non-agenda items and announcements. The first one is the award winners for the Public Works Annual Coloring Contest. And Mr. Edelbeck, you want to take over here?
And to celebrate National Public Works Week, there's two things that we do. We have a cookout tomorrow for our supervisors, all cookouts for our employees. We hang banners throughout the city. We have a proclamation that we'll be reading after this, thanking our employees for all the work that they do. There's a state proclamation that the governor has issued for this week for Public Works Week and there's national proclamations. And to top it off, we have a second grade coloring contest. Now, I am not exactly sure, but I think this is probably the 17th or 15th year. So there's some pretty old second graders out there that will be joining the ranks of alumni and winners, so that's a good thing. What we do is we distribute the coloring contest to all the second graders in the city and they'll submit them by the date, are collected. And not me, but the mayor gets to choose the top seven. He chose seven this year, winners for the coloring contest. So last week, the mayor selected those. I went to visit some of you in your class some morning. And if you'd like to come up here, we want to... We want to post that you did and give you a small award for that. So we'll start with Isaiah Murphy. This is Anderson's class. This is Isaiah's right here on top. Right here. Congratulations. Right over here. There you go. Diego Werner from Mrs. Ellie's class, WLC. You've got to shake the mayor's hand, too. Okay, Connor Jones from Mrs. Seifert's class, WLC. How you doing Connor? Congratulations. Okay, and Macy Sudzinski from Mrs. DeRae's class, WLC. Claire Hemmela from Mrs. Risto's class at Chain School. Congratulations. Sawyer Waymeyer, Mrs. DeWalt's class, Chain School. And last but not least, Josie Peterson, Mrs. Hanky's class of WLC. When I meet with the students, we talk a little about public works. I ask them a few questions. They're pretty intelligent kids. There's a few prospective hirees here, maybe for summer internships, so parents keep that in mind. They know the color of the trucks and why they're different colors and all that. And we talk a lot about safety because that's a lot that has to do with public works, that trying to keep our employees safe. Again, we're thankful for all that our Public Works employees do to serve our community and this is one way to celebrate that. We have a small award to give you. Okay. Isaiah? Sorry. Dairy Queen certificate. Now, I've told other award winners that this is your gift certificate now. You might want to share with mom and dad, but siblings are options. So that's up to you. But let's give them all a round of applause. So what we'll do is, these posters now will be displayed up in the hallway between City Hall and the library. And they'll be there for a whole year. So every time you come into City Hall or go into the library, okay, and you're with your buddies or your girlfriends, you go, hey, look what's on the wall over there. That's mine. So you can brag for a whole year. Let's move in here and let the parents get some pictures. You guys want to sneak in a little bit closer?
Good shot. Good photo bomb.
Take a selfie right in front of them all.
Okay, one more round of applause. We have anybody that wants, would like to say something? You're on TV. You're on TV. Are your teachers? Anything? I'm not going to go any further than that. All right. All right. Thank you very much. Way to go, guys. came from the city council and the mayor's office. And I'll read that. This is National Public Works Week proclamation, May 18th through May 24th, 2014. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public works systems and programs such as waters, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collections, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and services, whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel whose staff of Wopaka Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of City of Wopaka, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through May 24th, 2014 as National Public Works Week in the city of Wopaka, Wisconsin, and I call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works to the recognized contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. All right, excellent. And next, we also have another proclamation. And John is, you've got it in front of you.
Sure.
Yeah. John's going to read that.
This was the proclamation that the governor proclaimed for Public Works Week in the state of Wisconsin. And since this year I'm president of the Wisconsin chapter, I actually received the, requested and received the original document. So I think I had it, it was being passed out up there for you to look at, but I can read it here. Office of the Governor, whereas the year 2014 marks the 54th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of Wisconsin, and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from the private sector and state and local units of government, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, sewage, and refuse disposal systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children to learn and understand the importance of public works and public works programs in their communities. Now therefore, I, Scott Walker, Governor of the state of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2014 as Public Works Week throughout the state of Wisconsin, and I commend this observance to all of our citizens. Signed by the Governor and Secretary of State.
Awesome. Thanks, John. Next, we have a plaque that we would like to give an appreciation to an individual that has been on the library board.
Airport.
Airport board. Sorry about that. So if I could ask Larry Obialla, please come up.
Talking before I was thinking.
Larry. Thank you. I do have a plaque for you here and I just want to read it. This is to Larry Obialla, given an appreciation for your years of service to the city of Wopaka as chairperson and member of the airport board from 1996 to 2014. Thank you, Larry. Given this 20th day of May, 2014, Mayor of Wopaka, Brian Smith. And Larry, I'd like to present that through all your long service to us.
Thank you. It was, it was short, 18 years really. I was just looking at that picture on the wall there. If there was a picture of the airport up there next to it from 18 years ago, you wouldn't recognize the place. I guarantee that. It's come a long way in that length of time. And a lot of it is because of Mayor Henry, city council members, and the public. And Sandy with her support, taking care of me, I don't want to mess things up. We have a good airport.
Yeah, you should have been on the library board the whole time.
Yeah. We have a really good airport manager there in Pete Anderson. And I can see the thing only progress. And one of my goals would be to see some industrial development around the airport and people that could actually have businesses that want and need the airport as part of their business function. And I think that will go a long way to, you know, bringing it better than it already is. But it's okay. For the community, it's, I would say it's a world-class airport for this type of community. And I appreciate everybody's support and help over the 18 years. And thank you. And it's just time to retire.
Larry, thank you very much.
Enjoyed.
Yeah, it's been a good run. We appreciate everything that you've done for us and we know that you had that close and dear to your heart as you went through the, everything. And we appreciate all your hard work. Next, we have a Wopaka area chamber letter. This is a tourism review and update. Jeff, did you want to say anything on that?
I just asked Henry if I should be here if there are any questions.
Okay, so you... Anybody have any questions of Jeff? He is here available to you if you have any questions. Otherwise, this letter is for informational purposes only. I said this a couple of times and I've said it in front of Jeff once and something that I, I attended a tourism event that was out at the Best Western and it was interesting to hear some of the statistics. So take a good look at some of that stuff that's there and you'd be surprised at some of the things you learned. One of the things that I always felt that Wopaka County is a very vital tourism area, which it is, but if you look at our status, where we sit with the 72 counties in the state of Wisconsin, we are number 31 out of 72 counties. So we have room to improve, no doubt about that. So it is very important that we consider that tourism is one of our top areas where we receive income from in our county. So we appreciate the hard work the chamber has put in that. Thanks, Jeff. Next, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there is any non-agenda item that somebody in the audience would like to talk to us about, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to five minutes or less. If not, we'll move on right away to the department announcements and reports and we'll start with Gene Peterson. What is it, like five months and counting or?
Some...
Five years and counting?
The cash flow is fine and all the departments have come in quite well with their budget so far this year and nothing unusual to report.
Next, we have, I'm sorry. Next, we have the library.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. We do have a lunch and learn on Friday. It is an author who's written a book called Trout Caviar, The Fine Art of Foraging, and he's going to be doing a cooking demo with foraged foods. And we'll also have a foraging hike after that program. It is at noon and we're asking people to register either by calling or going on our website. We're getting geared up for our summer reading programs for all ages, so we have an adult, a teen, and a children's program. And reading and literacy activities are aimed at making sure that kids keep actively engaged in learning and reading during the summer so they don't have that summer slide that happens. So we're going to be providing programs for kids June through August this year. Also, I don't know if you've heard the news, but we are receiving the tree from Dragon Wings Bookstore to be installed in the children's department. And an artist has been commissioned by the Library Foundation to create a mural near the ceiling of trees and leaves and animals that kids can really look at and interact with. So to complement the new tree that's going to be coming in. This is the last week for the Peeps Show, so if you haven't seen it, you can stop by and see that at the library. Otherwise, we're very busy getting ready for summer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Peg. Next, we have Economic Development Director Brennan Keane.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. On the large, large project basis, first one is Main Street. We had another meeting a week ago with the Main Street Visioning Committee. It was kind of a follow-up to the previous meeting where we did some exercises on 10x10 placemaking, but this last meeting, we had the opportunity to actually go outside and actually start looking at some of the spaces along Main Street, not only along Main Street, but also some of the streets that kind of connect into it as well. A lot of different ideas were flowing out during that meeting. And actually, good discussion as well. We actually had to give some homework out to the committee members and I have started to receive some of that information that has flown back into the department. We are looking to have, to get at least, give an update to the, to the community and to the public. We're looking to actually have kind of a little stand at Strawberry Fest this year to actually get some of the information out, all the data that's been collected thus far and information that's been presented to the committee. We're going to actually get, have a little, a couple boards probably created and a little stationed there during Strawberry Fest. The strategic plan is moving along very well. We had the last of, I'll say, four sessions that was in regards to actually data collecting and working with the city council. During that committee, the whole meeting, I had announced that we were going to have it at July or June 10th at Fox Valley Technical College. Speaking with the team, we are actually going to change that approach and actually just have it with the city council members here at City Hall. Location to be determined. I need to check out the library, but the meeting is still scheduled for June 10th, beginning at 6:30, I believe. We needed to accommodate one of the team members late arrival that evening. That will be the presentation of the draft plan, so I am busy working on that currently and working with the team to prepare that for June 10th. The Plan Commission has started to undertake at least the beginning steps of the zoning coterie, right? I had a brief presentation with the Plan Commission last week at their regular meeting. There'll be a follow-up presentation that we'll be bringing in East Central Wisconsin for. They are teaming up with us on this. We received a couple of technical assistance grants with them to support us during this project. It's going to be a long process, probably about a year to 18 months, but looking forward to the progress moving forward with the Plan Commission and the community on that. With that, we're, the department immediately right now is working on a couple ordinance amendments that'll be brought forward to the council within the next couple of months regarding our fire district, scrap dealer licenses, how those are handled, and a notification process for weed and snow removal when it relates to code enforcement. On a positive note, Cubic Fabrication is going to be doing about a 31,000 square foot addition to their facility. They're looking to probably start within the next 30 to 45 days. You may see some construction out there right now. They're just grading out their pad and getting some more final grades done, but that project is moving forward and expansion to occur later this year. South Park is moving along well. Aaron will probably have some follow-up information, but the project is proceeding to get done. Substantial completion is to be done right around June 20th. And we'll be ready for the July 2nd donor recognition party. Last meeting in the council, gave the approval for the IT department to move forward with the website. The community and economic development portion of it will be launched probably by the end of this week. So looking forward to actually have that actually out on the website. That will provide greater flexibility for the community and for people to actually traverse the website. There's a lot of new online tools when it comes to small business entrepreneurship, just general economic development. It's laid out in a more streamlined fashion and more user-friendly fashion for everybody that comes to the website, provides for transparency when it, and just being open with the community and the business world when it comes to our site. And I just got back from my fifth of six courses for my IEDC certification. That one was actually on small business and entrepreneurship. It was a very eye-opening course and looking forward as it ties into our Main Street program and visioning. But also with that, I am working with Dave Teal on the county tourism project. When it relates to small business entrepreneurship, we're actually going to be going in and kind of tag teaming a little bit, meeting with all the business owners along Main Street, hopefully getting them signed up for the tourism portion of the Wopaka County website, but also meeting with them to talk about their businesses and the programs that are out there from a regional and state level. That's everything.
Awesome. Brennan, I... Speaking of Cubic Fabrication, the property just to the, it's to the west of theirs with those mounds of sawdust or whatever that is, what?
Midwest pallets supply?
Yeah.
We are working on that. I have taken a little bit more initially right now. John Lust is our code enforcement officer, but I have taken on a couple projects as relates to code enforcement within the community. Recently, there's been some letters sent out from my department for a couple of different projects. That is actually one of the projects I am working on right now to bring that property more into conformance. I actually did speak with them late this afternoon. The fence was fixed, which is good. The mound of sawdust, I'm meeting with them on Thursday, but the mound of sawdust is actually, I guess, sold to a company in Missouri that they're going to be coming up and taking that within the next couple of weeks. And the city does have some older restricted covenants out there for screening of outdoor material that needs to be addressed, which I'll be working with them on that as well.
Good. Awesome. Thanks. Any other questions? Brennan, comments? All right, we'll move on to John Edelbeck, Director of Public Works.
Okay, just to highlight a couple of projects we're working on, we have, you'll hear in the next coming meetings, we have some... hear in the next coming meetings, we have some water main work. We've got a couple minor projects we're looking at doing to improve our system. And again, you'll be hearing more about that within our system, our water main system. Cross-connection control program, we implemented this program two years ago. We've been through the initial phase and we were working with Hydra Designs and we will be bringing forth another two-year contract with them to continue our program. They have been managing the industrial and commercial side of cross-connection control. I don't know if any of you have been affected or at any of your businesses through the inspections and that. And again, this is cross-connection between the wastewater system or any type of contaminant in our drinking water system. And this is a DNR mandated program. So, we'll be hearing more about that at our next meeting. Again, also, our Channel Lake Sanitary District wastewater treatment services agreement is up in June. And I've been working with the chain the last couple of months to look at renewing or revising that. It's a 20-year-old agreement. And we both agree that there are some aspects of that agreement that need to be modified and looked at. And I've talked to staff and the mayor about this, so we'll be hearing more about that at our next meeting as well, hopefully, if I can get some response back from the chain before that. We have a piece of equipment that we're preparing bid preparation for at the wastewater treatment plant. We are still waiting. It's been two years now. We've applied for our new DNR discharge permit and the DNR has not issued that permit yet. We have had some indications on what will be in the new permit and some things that will affect this and affect our budget and some items that we might want to incorporate also in our Channel Lake Sanitary District agreement. But we're being told now July will be issued that agreement after two years. We have some upcoming safety training department-wide. We safety train with Parks Department and we jointly train with the city of Wyowega. However, we will not be jointly training for this. This is not our annual training. This will be some other training that they're they're not going to be taking part in. We're cleaning up some water main repairs yet. You saw fire hydrant work. The fire hydrant leaked on, was leaking at the valve on School Street. The work that we did on Shearer Street, we replaced half a block there of water main. We're possibly going to be utilizing the contractor that's going to be doing work at South Park. If we can utilize that contractor, you'll be seeing curb go back in on Shearer Street with that contractor. If not, we're letting that at the gravel, sand and gravel settle. And so, we're not neglecting it. We want that ditch to settle over time and before we put pavement on it, we will have some problems with it. So, that's why you see things things sit for a period of time. With that said, as of April 30th, with a third of the budget year gone, we are at 31% in our street budget, 31% in our water, and 27% in our sewer division. And snow and ice is at 90% for the calendar year.
Awesome. Thanks, John. Any questions?
I would like to ask one.
Sure, go ahead.
On your report, there's a little mention of an engineering ongoing on Hillcrest Drive and Fulton Street project?
Yes.
Scheduled question mark. Is there some, something you can lightens on in that?
That, the council approved an engineering design contract with K Sing, which is, has the office just up the street in Pieter's Office Building. And we're in design right now with them. I I'm asking them for a schedule for design completion. So, that, we did not program any money for construction this year for that project. It's designed also with a overlay project on West Fulton Street from Hillcrest to Western Avenue because of the bad pavement there. So, those two projects are being designed with K Sing. And depending on if we budget monies next year, we're hoping to build it next year. Again, there was no capital budgeted this year for roadwork, or we would have built it this year.
Anything else? All right, Aaron, Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope everyone's doing all right tonight. I just wanted to first take you through my monthly report. There's a couple updates on there. I know, I think that's found on page 26 in the packet. In the report, it says we had 15 teams in men's softball. That has been dwindling, but in fact, we are up to 17. We got two late teams, which is good. That's a league we'd like to see stay strong and hopefully build in the future here. That is still down from one team last year, but it's better than than the outlook was looking. South Park, Brennan touched on that a little bit. We do have the donor recognition set for July 2nd, like he said. Right now, we're, Christiansen Painters will be in probably sometime Thursday or Friday this week and look to finish up middle of next week, which will allow the plumbers, Mike Enger-Bretson, to get his fixtures in. And that is on the way, like I said, I think in a past meeting, the playground is set to be installed June 16th through June 20th. And everything should be wrapped up very shortly after that. I did want to give a budget update since I did get an update after I submitted this report. The budget outlook for the Parks and Rec Department, 33% through the year. Rec Administration's at 29.9%. Youth Programs is at 2%. Youth Center is at 29.3%. Recreation Buildings, 31%. Beach, .1%. Parks, 13.7%. Senior Center, 24.3%. And Cemetery, 26.8%. You'll also find the Oz Committee update minutes in your in your packet on page 160 through 162. Just wanted to give you a quick update on what we've been meeting about and what's been going on over at Oz Park. If you guys aren't familiar, Oz Park is the park behind Plant 2 and 3 at the Foundry, located on Constance Road by CAP Services there. And we've been approached by Cliff Morton, who is a part of CAP Services and actually works with the Fresh Start Program. And and he has devised a plan basically to to make Oz Park into a educational park, much like an eco park. There's not a lot of eco parks around this area. In fact, there's not a lot in the state or in the United States. It's actually more of an overseas type of setup. But he has came, came to us and the Oz Committee with this proposal. So, so he's got plans and we've been meeting, I think we've met three times. Scott, is that right? And we're looking at getting funding for a boardwalk there, an educational shelter as well as a small shelter and some other small projects. And when I say getting funding, Cliff is putting together a Friends of Oz Parks, which will not only do the grant writing, go after the funding, but also take care of maintenance. And that was, that was one of my concerns, is putting up these these buildings and boardwalks and not being able to maintain them. But but he has committed themselves, that group, to taking care of all of this. Like I said, I don't want to give, get too much into detail until funding is is actually received. And at that time, I'll give you more information on each specific project within the park. I do want to touch base on the article in the paper you probably saw last week with the YMCA coming into town. We've gotten a lot of questions as a Parks and Rec Department, how that'll work with our department as we provide a lot of recreational services for youth, adults, seniors, and so on. I do want to let you know that we have been in contact with the YMCA for probably the past six months. So, we were aware that this was going to be happening. We've been in contact with Scott Shanehofer, who is the director of the YMCA, and Nina, who will oversee the site here in Wapaka. There will be a program director here in Wapaka, which will be Randy O'Connell, who currently runs the HFH and is the director of that, or the manager of that now. And he will stay as well as the staff there at HFH. And and we felt comfortable in our meetings in the past six months with with the Nina YMCA, with the Fox Cities YMCA, and how we can work together to provide programs that that we can't provide right now with our staffing and with the volunteer groups we work with. So, so we're confident that they're going to come in, work with us to fill niches that that we can't reach. So, I think that'll be a good, a good collaboration with the Y there. And and we'll definitely, you know, I think we'll see, we'll see a lot of good things come out of it. In no way are we going to stop creating programs. Andrew was brought on board three months ago. We are still going to roll out new programs and continue to to improve and and create what we're doing, but also use their resources as they move in. That'll be September, sometime between September 1st and December 31st. I did want to touch on, I did report to the Farmington Town Board last night on numbers, on participation numbers. Everything went well. They were appreciative of the update. I did want to touch on a few things and update you guys on some things that I found in this. Since 2011, in 2011, our total programs for, now, I'm just talking youth programs here, was 19. That, those are 19 programs that run year-round. The total participants at that time was 1,748 participants. And in 2013, we had 28 programs, which was an increase of 47.3%. And our total participants were up to 1,852, which is 117 more than 2011. And that's about a 6% increase there. I just thought that was something interesting that I thought I'd share with the council. I did also want to touch on our tournament startup for the summer here on May 31st, and they will run through July 13th. So, if you guys have anything going on or don't have anything going on on weekends, come out to Swan Park. There'll be something every single weekend out there. And we're gearing up and working with our volunteer boards and organizations for that. And then we are looking, just wanted to give you a heads up, we're looking at different options for, I know I've reported to the council here on on the status of our roof at the, in the Augie Austin Gym, as well as the floor. Right now, we're just working with two different companies on assessing that roof situation. And I will be looking to report both of their opinions to our park board next month, as well as you guys probably in the second meeting next month. So, and that is all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Aaron. I just want to touch on the the same article that Aaron had talked about, dealing with the YMCA. Anytime we have change, it brings out questions, no doubt, good things and bad things. But I think people have to understand that we we need to, we need to let this flow through because a lot of these questions that you're asking right now will be answered. And we have some, the city has been working pretty close with with this, with the Y coming to town for for a few months now. And actually, Aaron is going to sit on their local board of the directors. And we also have a representative from the school board that will be on there, too. So, we are going to have good representation there. And we can only see good things that happen by doing this, and we're certainly hoping for those things. One of the things that was my concern is is that we make sure that none of the children get left behind, that maybe can't afford to do that, and the Y has assured us, that, as well as the Rec Department has assured us that there will be scholarship-type things to help these people participate in these events if they're not able to do that. So, I see it as a good thing happening to our community. We can only add more things that will help us there. So, thanks, Aaron. Any questions, comments for Aaron? Chief Koch.
Thank you, Mayor. You have my report in your packet. There's a couple of items I wanted to highlight. First and foremost is our propane squad. We've talked about this probably on and off for the last year and a half, since we have a three-year contract with our propane squad, which we set up about a year and a half ago. When we first started this program, the service was being done in Appleton. That has since moved to Marinette, which is about two hours away. So, anytime we have any service on that squad, anything related to the fuel system at all, it has to go to Marinette. So, that's kind of changed our thinking. Our hope was to maybe expand propane into the rest of our fleet. We're certainly see a cost savings on a monthly basis because of the fuel, absent a few months in the wintertime. But now, we're back to like $1.29. So, so that that cost benefit is certainly in our favor. But we'll, we're probably not going to be looking at expanding that too much in the near future unless we get someplace closer. Because when we have to take a car two hours away, whether it's being towed or driven, it's it's a substantial time commitment and we lose that service on that car for some time. We did have a problem recently with the electronic module as it services the propane part of it. And so, that car's been down for about a month. We've been out without that car now for, you know, for the five weeks. We did just get it back. So, it is back up and running now. And the majority of those costs are covered under that warranty through the leasing company. So, there's not too much cost involved there. It's just not having that car in use. Another thing, speaking of cars, we did have one unmarked car that lost the transmission. That was a car that had the longest for eight years, over 100,000 miles of city miles on it. The commission met and agreed to purchase a used vehicle through a local vendor, all told after a trade-in. We're probably going to get that at about a $15,000 cost. A new transmission on the car we were looking at was between three and five. And that just didn't make any financial sense. And that money is coming out of our current equipment budget. And we'll have to see how that plays out the rest of the year. But it was something that had to be replaced. One of our most recent hires, Jeremy Malroy, took a position with New London Police Department where he was from. We have since filled that with our part-timer, Nate Nelson. And he was basically promoted with advantage to full-time. So, he is our new full-time officer, and I hope to get him here at the next council meeting. And the rest is informational.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Any questions, comments for the chief? All right, Henry.
Thanks, Mayor. I have just a few items. My report starts on page 43 of the the packet. Aaron mentioned the donor recognition event on July 2nd. That's Wednesday, July 2nd. It is at 3 o'clock. And we'll be getting some invitations out shortly to that. So, I hope we can come to that. Just to remind you that next week, or the next meeting on June 3rd is when we have Brad Vigut scheduled. And we're going to be talking about the debt policy. If you remember, I think we talked back in March about it. And he's going to come in. And he was given some instructions to look at some different elements of the debt policy and come up with some some ideas on that. And then on the heels of that meeting over the summer, and we want to tag it to the day of the council meeting, to have a couple workshops on capital budgeting, again, get back on track on that. I think our thoughts were to get that put to bed one way or the other prior to getting into the operational budgets right after Labor Day. I am working with Gene. We're going to try to bring some more information into the discussion to kind of aid you in your making a decision, because it's an important decision. We have, you know, deferred some maintenance and some capital, and we hope to get back on track on that. So, that'll be something we'll be focusing on over the summer. Again, we promise we won't bring you in on extra meeting date to try to do it on the dates that you're here. I am working, and as mentioned in the report, as you know, Gene's retiring at the end of October. And my plan is to come next month with some selection, recruitment and selection outline and answer any questions you might have on the process. And finally, just a budget overview. I'm at, we're 33% through the year, right? And my budgets were at right at 32%, 31.99. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Henry. One thing we want to make sure we mention that after our city council meeting tonight, don't forget, members, we do have a committee of the whole meeting that will start almost immediately after the council. So, sit tight. All right, let's move on then to unfinished business. We have a continual discussion on our crossing guard positions description and base structure. Chief Koch.
Yeah, we left it last meeting. I believe the council is in favor of raising that rate based on our current hiring dilemma. I reached out to the school district, actually Dr. Patchell, and he's also agreed to raise that rate due to the position and the nature of work that they have to perform in weather and whatnot. So, they've agreed to raise that amount and continue with the cost share. Now, for the rest of this calendar year, and I wouldn't anticipate putting this into place until the start of the next fall season. We've got a few weeks left of this school year anyway. It would cost about $1,800 to cover We've got a few weeks left of this school year anyway. It would cost about eighteen hundred dollars to cover that. And cost sharing, the city's responsibility, the city's responsibility would be about nine hundred dollars, which I believe we would be able to come up with out of my existing budget. I wouldn't be asking for any additional money. But that would basically say that their rate is being increased from their dollar, nine dollars and some change, to basically thirty dollars a day, and it would be like fifteen dollars a shift. Because sometimes in the morning, they might only be there fifty minutes. In the afternoon, it's an hour and ten minutes. Some agencies jurisdictions do do that just on a per shift. I guess however we want to set it up. But by increasing it to thirty dollars a day, essentially that's fifteen dollars an hour roughly, up from their nine dollars and twenty cents, whatever that is, an hour. So I guess I'm asking for approval to increase their wage.
And that would be effective at the new school year?
Yes.
I would move for approval. Second?
Motion by Mayo, second by Olson, that we approve the pay increase to the crossing guards, which we have two crossing guards.
Correct.
From the nine dollars plus to fifteen dollars per hour, starting with the 2014-2015 school year. Any discussion?
That just sounds like a little bit of a high percentage rate increase. Not that they don't necessarily deserve it, but it is a sixty-six percent increase based on one man's recommendation that he would work for that. I agree it's not a big total overall with the nine hundred dollars.
Nobody else is applying, no. It's, I look at it as, yeah, it's a big increase, but upon learning of what they're getting paid for what they do, I think they've been underpaid for a long time.
Right, that split shift is, who wants to do that? Not many people.
Any other comments? So anyone call the roll?
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Porczadzki?
Aye.
Ann Dabinski?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Chief, thank you for your work in that. Okay, let's move on to new business, then. We have the 2013 annual audit report, which is
Good evening.
Starting on page eighty-one. Thanks, Jay.
Yep, actually, and tonight I brought a different packet, just, I'll probably be going over that mostly rather than the audit report itself. My name's Jay Bennett. I'm with Johnson Block and Company, a partner in charge of your audit the last few years. To start out, you guys did receive an unmodified or unqualified audit opinion this last year in your financial statements, which is the same opinion that you've received in the last several years. It's the highest audit opinion that you can get. Other audit opinions would be a qualified opinion, which is an except for, or disclaimer, or an adverse opinion. But again, you guys got an unmodified or unqualified, unqualified opinion, I'm sorry. Getting into the handout that I brought with me tonight, page one, this is a, again, I tried to summarize most everything. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time. This is just a summary of the general fund only, because that's your, by far your largest fund. We can always get into other funds, and I do have some information to share with you regarding the utilities tonight, too. This page one is the general fund. Your other major funds are the debt service, capital improvements, TIF four and eight. But again, this is just the general fund only. This would correspond with exhibit A3 in the full audit report. If you look there, the total assets fairly comparable between years, three point nine million at the end of 2013 versus basically three point eight million at the end of 2012. Your total fund balance, which is in the middle of the page basically, at year-end was one point seven million this year. Last year it was a little bit over two million, almost two point one million. Two million one thousand, or two million eighty thousand eight sixty-two is what it was in 2012. And again, it was one million six eighty-nine nine sixty-three at the end of 2013. At the bottom of the page, it's just kind of breakout of your fund balances. There's different classifications of your fund balances, which is non-spendable, which is like advances or inventory, assigned, where you're designating some funds for something in particular, and unassigned fund balance. So your unassigned fund balance at the end of 2013 was a million five, basically. Page two, again, this is a real general summarized income statement for the general fund only. The first column, 2013 budget, and then you have your 2013 actual. So you had budgeted for about a three hundred to use fund balance or expenditures in excess of revenues of three hundred and forty-four thousand four sixty-seven, and actual results came in pretty close to that. You did, expenditures were greater than revenues by three hundred and ninety thousand eight ninety-nine. So fairly close overall. Couple differences, if you looked at the budget to actual other financing sources, you budgeted a little bit more revenue than what you got in, particularly for some sale fixed assets for about a hundred thousand and a portion of insurance claim for about ninety thousand, which I believe was reflected in the 2012 audit. We picked it up as a revenue when it was pretty much assured collection. Bottom half of that page just gives you kind of a summary of where you're at for your general obligation debt. 2013, your GEO debt capacity was roughly nineteen point eight million, and your GEO outstanding debt was twelve point two million, roughly sixty-one percent of that amount. The previous year in 2012, you're at seventy-one percent. You did pay off roughly about a million nine this last year in general obligation debt. For all funds across for the general governmental funds, not, this was excluding the water, sewer, and telecommunications. Overall, you had the net loss of the year of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Some of it was in the general fund, some of it was in capital improvements where you had some money that you came in or you spent it down on some projects. But exhibit A5 kind of gives you a detail of all the funds, except for the non-major funds, which there are some combining schedules if you ever want to look at those in the C exhibits. Page three, this is just a comparison for the last three years of your general fund expenditures. Again, overall, it's been fairly consistent. 2011 was a little bit higher than the last couple of years. Your highest expense is the public safety, which is the top bar code there, about one point six million, one point seven million for the 2013, followed by the next, which is culture, recreation, and education services. Again, overall, you can see most expenditures have stayed fairly flat over the last three years. Page four, it's just a pie graph of those expenditures, kind of breaks down your percentages by department. The top part is 2013. Public safety is thirty-three percent of your total expenditures. Public works, twenty percent. The leisure, the culture, and recreation is twenty-nine percent. And those are pretty consistent between the last two years, twelve and thirteen. Page five, this is a bar graph of the general fund revenues for the last three years. As you can see, revenues have dropped a little bit. The biggest one at the top there is your intergovernmental grants or revenues. State aids have dropped. DOT road aids dropped about a hundred and eighteen thousand, I think, from 2011 to 2013. Shared revenue's gone down, and back in 2011, there were some one-time grants that kind of inflated that. There was a CDPG grant, I believe, for the town homes for about two hundred and six thousand. You also got a DOT payment for about a hundred thousand that year for road projects, so that kind of skewed that a little bit. So you see a steeper decline there. The taxes, again, your total levy has actually stayed fairly flat. It's, I think, total about three point three or three point four million. The reason why the general fund is decreased a little bit, there's been some allocations of the levy to some other funds. But overall, really, your taxes have stayed fairly consistent, fairly flat. It's just here in the general fund and how the allocation is done. Page six, I get some pie graphs, again, of the total revenues for general fund. Taxes, thirty-one percent of your total revenues. Intergovernmental revenues, forty-six percent. Again, between the two years, the percentages are right in line with where they have been. Page eight, this is just a summary of your general fund fund balance for the last three years. Kind of breaks it out between those classifications we talked a little bit about earlier. It has, for 2011 and twelve, it stayed pretty consistent. For thirteen, it dropped again because you had a budgeted to spend down fund balance. One thing of note there, though, your unassigned fund balance, again, is one million five. That is twenty-nine point eight percent of your budgeted expenditures, which is right in line with what your fund balance policy is. There's a note in there, so your, your policy right now is to at least maintain a fund balance between fifteen and twenty-five percent. And anything over thirty percent would go into a rainy day fund, so you're meeting that policy right now. Couple other things of note, you know, water and sewer don't have this on there. Water had a net income for the year of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and sewer had a net income of roughly four hundred and two thousand. The rate of return for each one of those utilities, water's about four point zero nine percent, and sewer's three point eight five percent. There are some exhibits in the audit report. If you wanted to see specifically water and sewer and telecommunications, they would be the A7 exhibits and also A8. A8's the income statement, A7's the balance sheet. If you wanted anything to look at in those. In addition, in the, that's about all I had on the financial side of it. There are some management letter comments that I have to go over. I think in the PDF that we sent out was page sixty-two, sixty-four. I'm not sure what it would be in your packet. Again, some of these are some comments we've had in prior years, but just, again, we like to reiterate them. One of the things is segregation of duties, just because of your size. You don't have a segregation of duties. You know, you do have people that take in collections, that do billings, those types of things. So just be aware of that, you know, as the council, you need to provide oversight, question things, look into things, those types of things. Next comment would be on the preparation of the financial statements. It does take some expertise to convert your fund statements to the government-wide and also do all the notes and disclosures. We do provide a draft copy prior to final issuance for city staff to review. But as far as preparation, we do it, and that's a common comment for most audit clients. Additional comments, utility billing receipts. Currently, you have the same software for your accounting package and your utility billing package, but currently they're not integrated, so it doesn't post automatically billings. It's done manually with a journal entry. You just think you should explore that. The system should be able to work together and create and eliminate doing manual journal entries. In addition, you do have some cash and investments that year-end that were above collateral or FDIC insurance limits. I just want to make sure that you know that, and, you know, we always recommend going out and getting additional collateral or moving to other banks. Roughly, I think at year-end, you had about a million, one million seven that was in excess of FDIC insurance and collateral, pledged collateral by banks. Currently, you know, the debt service levy, and this is part of where the property taxes are going to also, the TIFs, you know, the increments that you're generating from the TIF districts aren't enough to make the debt payments. So there have been some transfers from the debt service fund to several of the TIF districts. You do have the donor TIFs and distressed TIF districts, those types of things. You know, hopefully, in the future, you do, increments will go up, and you won't have to levy as much for those payments. We are tracking those, but we just want to point that out. Also, you know, with this new state legislation, you know, you're limited to the amount you can increase your levy anymore. So if you raise any new fees, garbage, whatever you might do, you're supposed to adjust your levy by that. I just want to make sure that the council's aware of that, and before they, you know, establish any new set of fees or raise fees as well, to check in and see what that impact would have to do on your levy. This last year, we did record some adjustments in your customer accounts receivable. This is in the water, sewer, and telecommunications. Again, you know, it can kind of go hand in hand with having the both on the same system and posting adjustments and those types of things. But if you do have any write-offs, we recommend that, you know, council or somebody else is approving those to see what's going on. Those adjustments weren't large, two thousand maybe each. But again, we'd like to see some controls there in approving any write-offs. As a control, whoever's taking in, doing the billings, you like to see adjustments or write-offs approved outside or in addition to. One other comment we have is you're currently in the sick leave policy. I believe you have an option of either taking it as pay or using it for health insurance. We've had this comment for a couple of years, I believe. If you have that option, the IRS is starting to come in and saying it's a constructive receipt doctrine, and everything is taxable. That is okay if that's the city and everybody knows or understands the payroll tax and income tax implications of those two options. If they only have the option of using it for health insurance and couldn't get a payout, then it wouldn't be a taxable benefit. So when they do have the two options, you know, city ends up paying, and so does the employee, FICA tax or income tax for the employee. But the city would pay FICA tax on both right now, since they have the option. I just want to make sure you're aware of that. It can be kind of an administration and a payroll tracking issue. The IRS wants all the FICA tax paid upfront when the person makes an election. So an employee might actually have to give some funds to the city to pay their share of the FICA and Medicare tax. Lastly, the Public Service Commission, who regulates the water utility, has set up some new customer classes. Kind of let staff know on that, but there's a new multifamily classification that's going to, you have to keep tracking information, usage, consumption, revenue, those types of things, to report to the Public Service Commission each year. There's another classification for new irrigation, but I don't believe that you have any irrigation customers. I just want to make sure you're aware of that and tracking that information. That would be all that I have, guys. Questions?
Jay, not so much on the audit, but we've had some discussions at the council level, more of like when we have retreat discussions and so on, on knowing what our retiree liabilities are, so that we have a good running total of what that cost might be in anticipating retirees' cost in the year that they, I mean, I know it's impossible to predict when they're going to
-for the extension of utilities. I think the final court action isn't, is gonna happen this year. I think we thought that that had to go all the way through, but that would be, uh, you know, what's the sixteen thousand?
Right, I think in the audit report, we actually have kind of already gotten allowance to write that off, 'cause, uh, we didn't really, even though we left it on your books, we kinda didn't consider it to be collectible at this point for the audit report purposes.
That one, I probably should come to the council, I would say, or officially-
Yeah, yes. You know, anything that's, I think, really material or large, um, you know, if you had a water or sewer committee, I would say that they could, uh, do those approvals also. Um, if you don't have that committee, then the council should.
I have, uh, one more question for you, too. Uh, and this has to do with your, uh, discussion on the water and sewer bills using the same accounting software and so on. We've had preliminary discussions about, uh, updating our accounting software, and I think they have reached out to your- Have, have we reached out to them yet?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is that something that you would help us with, too, in recommending, uh, uh, some kind of software package that we would use or could use? Or get us, uh, um, so that we had, uh, three choices that we could look at, or something like that?
We could give you a name of some software, uh, that additional clients use, you know, maybe in your size, but, you know, as far as a recommendation or, or for sure, you know, I, I would leave that up to you guys.
Okay.
But we could give you some options, maybe some software companies that you might wanna look into.
Okay, that'd be great, that'd be helpful. Anybody else have any questions?
I have one. Considering the levy limits in the new fees, that, that doesn't include, um, water or sewer expenses?
No, no, 'cause water and sewer is not, um, supported by general property taxes. They're a user fee, based in their, what they call a proprietary fund. It's more like a business-type fund, is what those are. Your property tax is all, basically, all your governmental funds. If you're looking at the audit report, you'll see government-wide or business-type activities. And then, you know, the fund statements, you'll see governmental funds or proprietary funds. Proprietary funds are just your water, sewer, and the telecommunications. And you don't levy for those, uh, income or, you know, anything on those. The user fees are supposed to support the operation.
Thank you.
Yeah, they, they went to restrict, uh, refuse, if we wanted to implement a refuse fee that would not be allowed, an assessment. Could not assess for stormwater, a new stormwater fee. If we do, it has to equally reduce our levy.
Right.
Uh, however, recycling is exempt from that, uh, restriction.
Good to know, I didn't know that.
Yes.
But yeah, they've kind of, uh, you know, in the past several years, you know, municipalities were working, looking for ways to generate additional funds, um, because of levy limits and cuts in state aid, so, you know, some municipalities had started to do that, you know, charge garbage on, uh, with the utility billing, those types of things. It's not part of proprietary fund, but it was additional fee that they could gen, get and generate additional funds. And they didn't have to adjust the levy. Now they've closed that, and you would have to. You'd have to reduce the levy by the amount of that additional fee. So the net to the city is basically zero.
Interesting with the fees, I, I, I mean, maybe this is getting too nitty-gritty on that, but what if we were to raise our fees for, uh, building inspection? That would count.
It's, it's a fair, it's a, yeah, fair question, I, I believe that it would, I would check into it with the DOR, Department of Revenue, first. Yeah, they're just saying if you're rate, gonna raise fees or, you know, charges, that you have to reduce the levy, for the most part. You know, there might be some, you know, provision for, you know, you know, inflation, those types of things, but, um, I think any new fees, at least for sure, uh, what you have to reduce the levy.
Okay. Anybody else, anything? Well, thank you, Jay, um, if you do find that you have questions about the audit as you read through it, um, send your, uh, questions to Gene, and Gene then can pass them on to Jay to, to answer. But thank you very much for making the trip here.
All right, thanks, guys, have a good night.
You, too.
Thanks, Jay. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have a, uh, request, uh, contract for building inspection services with the Village of Wild Rose. Brennan, you gonna lead us on this?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Uh, everyone in your packet, we start on page one fifty-one if, uh, we're looking for it. Uh, just a brief, I guess, overview, uh, since the memo and, and, um, draft contract was in your packet. Uh, we were approached by the Village of Wild Rose, and I apologize, I wrote the city underneath the subject line, but the Village of Wild Rose about a week or two ago, regarding, uh, contraction for our building inspection services. Uh, the state of Wisconsin requires all municipalities to, um, have building inspection services for single-family and two-families, uh, homes. Uh, the rest of them can actually be contracted at that time with the state inspectors for commercial, industrial, and multifamily over a duplex. Um, you know, either you can have your own buildings inspected, like we have here, or you can contract out with a, a private building inspector, or there are contractual services out there for building inspection. Um, the city, uh, before I, uh, got here, actually, uh, when John Lust, who is our building inspection, uh, started here, the city was looking, they actually have contracted with a couple of the townships, uh, but their, uh, Bob Underberg, who used to be, uh, the former building inspector here, uh, still has a couple of those contracts. Um, so in preparing this draft proposal in front of you, it was actually taken off of a previous, um, I believe, direction by the city council, when looking at the other townships previously. Um, how it works is, we're looking at about a six-month contract right now, that would auto-renew at the end of this year, um, unless either municipality would give thirty days' notice that they did not want to, um, renew this contract. The reason why this is coming up is, there is actually a new single-family house that is being built within the Village of Wild Rose, so they're looking for inspection services. Uh, we would be utilizing our, um, fee structure that we have here in place right now. The only fee that we will not collect would be if the, if the Village of Wild Rose, uh, put on any additional type of zoning fee. We have our own zoning fee here, but they may have one, um, that they utilize, they would collect that money. And then the agreement is a ninety-ten split, so any, so ninety percent of the building fee would actually come to the city of a pack and pay for our services, and then the Village of Wild Rose would re, would keep the remaining ten percent. Again, this is good for six months with an auto-renew, um, at the end of this year, uh, for a year-long contract. I spoke with the, the village clerk down there, uh, again, this is just for immediate needs, uh, but I think they do desire long-term, uh, building inspection services. Um, again, this is not handling any zoning or anything else, but it would be for electrical, plumbing, um, services, again, for single and two-family duplex. Uh, we're fortunate that John Lust does actually live in Watoma, so he actually passes through the Village of Wild Rose, either on his way to work, on the way home every single day, so, uh, this would not be an immediate factor, uh, in, uh, against his time for, here at the city of a pack. Uh, as everyone knows, Ja, John does furlough himself one day a week, so he's really a four-day-a-week employee here at the city. Uh, so John would be handling any type of inspection services, either on his way into work in the morning or on the way home every night. Uh, to compensate for his time, um, I would be looking to, for two reasons. Um, one, um, just to compensate, 'cause this is outside of his workload than what he would be taking on. Uh, and two, um, this has been discussed within the department before, John is our code enforcement officer, and he has taken on, uh, more of an active role at my, at my direction to be out in the field a little bit more. Um, an increase in his gas mileage, right now he gets paid, uh, one fifty per month, and I'd be seeking that he would be, uh, have that increased to one seventy-five per month. Um, within the twenty fourteen budget, I did, uh, budget those monies, um, and was gonna be bringing that forward at some point, and this made sense to bring it forward this evening as well. Are there any questions?
Brennan, um, what, what costs would Wild Rose have with this program? I'm, I'm curious why they're getting ten percent, and we're getting ninety.
Um, I, I, I think it's just, the, the ninety-ten split was what, I guess, was proposed originally for the other townships, and we were just, I mean, we were just following suit with that. Uh, again, I think they would handle some administrative fee, and that's the reason why they would be looking at at least ten percent from their end, at the end of the day. But again, John is handling ninety percent of the work with doing the actual inspections, he would be meeting with the contractors and handling it, so that's, um, that, that percentage could change if, if the council deemed that, but-
Well, if they have costs involved, then they probably deserve something, but, uh, I, I can't think of what that would be. Thinking in the application?
I mean, the, the village clerk- The, the village clerk does handle all the applications currently, so again, John is just providing the building inspection services at that time.
Okay, that's included in the fee?
Yes.
Brennan, would there be any, uh, increase to his salary, other than the mileage, uh, adjustment you want?
No, there would be no increase to his, uh, his, um, yearly costs, again, the reason, to compensate for that, I was looking to increase his gas mileage reimbursement, again, for twofold, one, because of it, his duties outside, which is within this contract, and then the other one, uh, being he has taken on more of an active role with code enforcement within the city of limits here.
So the Village of Wild Rose has already approved this, or-
No.
-waiting for our approval?
They are, they are waiting for your approval, that they are taking it to their village board, I don't have a date on that yet. Uh, but again, they reached out to us, so I wanted to bring this forward to at least get approval on our end. Again, it's still, uh, needs approval, approval from their village board at the end of the day.
What, what's the downside here?
I don't think there is any downside. Uh, again, John, because, I mean, we're fortunate that John lives in Watoma, so he's doing this either in the morning on his way to work or on his way home after work hours. And again, the, the, the city's costs are being paid through, you know, the ninety percent that the city would receive from the inspection. A typical, I believe, from our perspective, a permit fee would be approximately, I mean, about a thousand dollars, so would be getting about nine hundred back from this.
And that would be for just new construction, or all, similar to our building permits for-
We're, we're utilizing our fees, our fee structure for new permits right now, that's what they're, what we're proposing.
Okay, so we're not gonna handle, uh, roof permits over there, we're not gonna-
It hasn't gone into that yet, again, this was to fit an immediate need for a new single-family house, but I believe that is up for discussion. Um, and I spoke with the village clerk on that, we were going to take a look at that later this year, to see whether or not they wanted to increase the, um, I guess, their contractual work with us, uh, at a later date, but that would be handled later this year and going into the twenty fifteen budget.
Does it, does it say in here that it's only for new construction? If I, if it did, I didn't see it, but maybe it did.
Um, I don't believe, uh, it, it does, we can certainly add that into there.
But my concern is, obviously, is that we have, I mean, if we enter into, uh, an agreement with the Village of Wild Rose, and we start doing other things besides new construction, like, uh, uh, a permit for roofs, for a new roof, we don't have a fee. I mean, that's, that's free, right, in the city?
No, we, we do have a roof permit here.
I don't think we charge for it, though, do we?
You have to get a permit, I would, I think there's, I think, I believe there's a modest fee for that.
Well, i- i- if it is, it's very small, I know that, 'cause we changed it.
It didn't use any fee.
So high, and we, I think we switched it to nothing. Yeah, so I'm afraid that, we, I wanna make sure that we get paid for, I mean, I, it's great, because we're making money off of the new construction, but some of these other permits and things that we have that John does, wanna make sure that we're not losing in this situation. More than happy to help out the Village of Wild Rose, and with John's expertise, um, but we wanna make sure that we don't lose in this situation.
Understandable.
And I don't see anywhere, too, Brennan, this is probably, I'm thinking this is something we might have to do at the next meeting, but I don't see your request, uh, for, to raise his monthly car loans to a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I put it in my memo.
It was in there somewhere.
In the memo, but it wasn't in the-
In his memo.
Okay, but it wasn't an action item. I didn't see it as an action item.
Okay.
So we'll have to bring that back at the next meeting.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. What do you think, council? I mean, at the very least, I think we should put in there that it is just for new construction for now, because that's what they're looking for.
Yep.
Right, and we can modify that at a later date, if need be.
I think we should take a chance on it. It's for six months, if it doesn't work, we can adjust at that time, but if we can help Wild Rose, um, and share, um, I think we should do it.
Okay, you wanna make that as a motion?
Sure, can she take that as my motion?
That is a good motion. I just wanna make sure that you agree that we should put in there for new homes only?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Fensky, a second by, uh, Pritchardski, that we enter into an agreement with, uh, the Village of Wild Rose for building inspection of new homes for a six-month period. Any discussion?
I presume Mr. Lust has no problem with this, he's thoroughly been briefed on this?
Yeah, he actually is the one that brought it to me, so they, they reached out to him first.
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
They reached out once before, a couple years ago.
And they, they backed off.
Yeah.
Brennan, after six months, if this is going really well, um, do you just come back and we extend it to a year? Or do we do, like, six months at a time, or how do you wanna do that?
I would come back later this year with the council, depending on what the desire of the Village Wild, Wild Rose is, that they want to actually continue or expand their inspection services, um, we would be bringing that back later this year. But again, uh, the immediate need was for the single-family house that they have coming in right now.
Sure, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, so if you vote aye, you will be voting in favor of this agreement with the Village of Wild Rose. Sandy will take the, oh-
Someone, um, it, there's a list of things that the city's going to provide in this agreement that includes, um, regular municipal office availability at Wild Rose Village Hall, a, a number of hours per week, and a backup building inspector when the primary inspector's unavailable. Are we ready to provide those things for Wild Rose?
The, as it relates to the, the number of hours, I, I don't believe that's been determined, again, we, we were gonna handle it that, um, it was gonna be before John comes into work at seven-thirty in the morning or on his way home. Um, we can certainly designate, uh, uh, a, a minimum time, uh, I don't think it's gonna be, again, it's gonna be an, uh, similar to our building inspection services here, it's an, it's an on-call basis, so as the contractor, um, is ready to do a, uh, inspection for a foundation or anything else, they would be calling John, John would be-
They reached out once before, a couple years ago.
Yeah, and they, they backed off.
Yeah.
Brennan, after six months, if this is going really well, um, do you just come back and we extend it to a year, or do we do like six months at a time, or how do you wanna do that?
I would come back later this year with the council, depending on what the desire of the Village Wild, Wild Rose is, that they want to actually continue or expand their inspection services, um, we would be bringing that back later this year. But again, uh, the immediate need was for the single-family house that they have coming in right now.
Sure, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, so if you vote aye, you will be voting in favor of this agreement with the Village of Wild Rose. Sandy will take the...
Um, it, there's a list of things that the city's going to provide in this agreement that includes um, regular municipal office availability at Wild Rose Village Hall, a number of hours per week, and a backup building inspector when the primary inspector's unavailable. Are we ready to provide those things for Wild Rose?
The, as it relates to the, the number of hours, I, I don't believe that's been determined, again, we, we were gonna handle it that, um, it was gonna be before John comes into work at seven-thirty in the morning or on his way home. Um, we can certainly designate uh, uh, a, a minimum time, uh, I don't think it's gonna be, again, it's gonna be an, similar to our building inspection services here, it's an, it's an on-call basis, so as the contractor um, is ready to do a, a inspection for a foundation or anything else, they would be calling John, John would be schedule, scheduling it around whether he's go- coming to work or coming home. Um, as for the backup building inspector, we don't even have that in place right now, that is something that I'm working on currently, um, for the, the City of Wapaka when John's on vacation, but we don't have that in place um, here at the city at the moment either, we're working on that.
Yeah, and I, I think the new home construction is kinda gonna dictate that, I mean, the council's basically saying no routine inspections, so the office hours is really a moot point.
It's very minimal to nothing, correct?
Yeah.
And it will be at no cost to the city, because it will be outside of his hours and we're not paying him any more money.
Correct.
So...
Should that be taken out of the agreement, you know, the, the two lines, uh, for, you know, legal purposes? The hours and then the backup inspector? Just to cover our bases? John Hart, I don't know, is that... They could come back and say, well, we're gonna hold, you know, fifty percent of the fee because you didn't provide us with an office hours of ex, you know, per week, I don't know.
I think this is bad in such a way that in the... Okay. Anybody else? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Porchatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eric Wilson?
Aye.
And Deb Fensky?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thanks Brennan. Uh, next we have uh, resolution number thirteen forty-one, this is a compliance mainu- maintenance annual report, uh, John Edelbeck.
Okay, this is on page three nineteen of your packet, um, this resolution is required to be submitted to the DNR and follows it is the um, annual report for the wastewater treatment plant, and again, we uh, obtained a four-point-oh grade point on our submittal, so uh, we would need action then on resolution number thirteen forty-one for the mayor to sign that, to submit that to the DNR.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number thirteen forty-one.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve of resolution number thirteen forty-one. Discussion. Congratulations, John, that's awesome.
Thank my staff, they're the ones that work every day at it, so...
All right, I'm not thanking you, thank your staff.
All right.
Any other discussion? Uh, again, Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porchatsky?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Wilson?
Aye.
Deb Fensky?
Aye.
And Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, John. Okay, uh, this is one of the, this is the item that got moved off of the consent agenda, so if we go back to uh, actually, it's in, in uh, packet one, we had two packets that got sent out this week, uh, Steve didn't have enough to read, added a little more for it.
I had enough to read, it took off.
So we're uh, this is on page, starts on page one oh five of packet one for you, and uh, this is license report number twelve twenty-four, which is the, the uh, operating license for um, class B license for liquor and beer and wine, as well as the class A uh, beer and liquor, and, and also the class C wine license. Uh, chief, you had asked to have this uh, removed from the consent agenda and put on the regular agenda?
Yeah, the reason I, the reason I asked that was because my office has probably pro- this processed several hundred of these applications now within the last couple of weeks, and I just needed to clarify that um, these license reports are those including the li- the license description of the current establishments?
It should be on file, yes. We don't include those with this, because it's a package, it's okay.
Yeah, and I just wanted to en- ensure, because I don't, I can't compare this year's license description with last year's, and I wanted to ensure that if there are any changes that they make on their application, that that comes before council as a separate item, because in essence, they're changing their license descriptions, happened one time before, and I don't have that capability of comparing one year to the next. I just wanna ensure that everything that's coming through this year is an exact duplicate of their previous or their existing license, and each applicant fills that out on their own, so they could just change one word and that changes the entire license description. They could put in, you know, whatever, deck, cooler, floor, room, that would never catch. And I did send a memo back to Barb on that, and I didn't get any response, I know, I think it was just today or yesterday that I sent that out, but I just wanted confirmation that none of these have changed from the prior, previously approved license descriptions, and I'm not sure how we can really streamline that, streamline that, other than, I don't know.
Well, certainly, chief, we can do that, I don't know, uh, for, for attorney Hart, couldn't council just a- approve them contingent on bringing back any changes for council separate approval, we do have two more meetings. If we find one or two where they are different, we can bring them back in June, you know, this license year is July one, so we've got plenty of time to bring those back, but yeah, we can go back and, and look, um, and verify that for you.
So, what you're suggesting then, Henry, is, is that we approve license report twelve twenty-four, pending inspection by the police chief, the fire chief, the building inspector, the health inspector, and pending background check, and pending that the description, premise description, so we're adding one more pending to this, one premise description.
And that way it'll keep this moving for the more, the, the routine same renewals, so we, you know, because we have a cou- impacts your office, impacts our office too, to get all this stuff out, so...
And, and, okay. I, I think the second part of your question though, chief, if I remember right, is, is that who is responsible for making sure that the premise description is the same from year to year?
Well, I would say that that comes uh, probably out of my office. I, I find a lot of times, uh, chief and I, we gotta get on the same page on this stuff, and it's okay, I mean, we'll work through it. I don't know why we're discussing this now in front of the council, I mean, we should be doing this as a staff at our level and working it out, and, you know, and, and we can do that in my office. Um, I, this is the first I've heard of it, chief, that you had an issue with it, so I apologize, I hadn't heard yet, but I would say that's probably my office to, to check that premise, because you're doing the physical inspection.
And only the background's on the agents, that's what I'm doing.
So, um, and I think when we go and talk in our next meeting, I think there's probably some things that we can do a little differently in my office to get you guys what you need to for approvals.
Um, to go along with that, and this actually goes back to last month's meeting when we talked about uh, going back to the committee level type thing, this is a perfect example of something that ran through judiciary committee and no longer runs through judiciary because we don't have a judiciary committee, and this is an item that I don't see that should be put on the consent agenda, I believe it should be on the regular agenda. Anyway, so I do appreciate that you did move it there, uh, because of these kinds of questions that we have. Um, what you're basically doing is, is when it's put on the consent agenda, we, and, and again, I said this last time too, we assume that everything has been checked out by our clerk's office, by our police chief, by our fire chief, and so on, unless they tell us differently, and I think that will open up discussion for us so that we fully understand what to do. So, again, I believe that anything that, that was prior, that would have been a discussion that we would have had on the public works, anything that we had that would be discussion, personnel, finance, or judiciary, should not be put on the consent agenda, and it should be put on the regular agenda for us to vote on those items separately. Okay, and I think this would help in that area. Um, again, I guess I don't understand either, premise description is something that the clerk's office makes sure is the same as the year before, but they don't physically go out and, and look at the premise description. Is that your job? Chief?
I, I guess my, when I do inspections, I'm inspecting to make sure that they have their licenses posted, and that they don't have like cigarette machines in areas that aren't accessible, um, smoking rooms are appropriate and compliant with state law. As far as what, whatever they write on their license description, just is what goes on their license, but I don't check each item that they put on there, but again, I don't, I wouldn't know if that's the same from year to year.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, looking at these reports, I noticed on page one twenty-three for Wapaka Mobile Travel Center, that for question number six, that they did uh, mark it yes, but I don't see the backside filled out. In contrast, I see for Nelson's Strike Zone, they also uh, checked yes, but they did fill out the back, but I don't see anything specifying what that was for Wapaka Mobile Travel Center. If you look at, if you look at uh, page one oh seven for Nelson's, you'll see there's a back page filled out. There's, there's nothing there for Wapaka Mobile.
We just have to check the uh, original application, maybe it just didn't get copied, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of applications, so we could have missed it, back sheet.
No, that was all, thank you.
Okay, any council members, uh, clerk's office? Anybody have any discussion?
Um, yeah, I just wanna make a comment, I, I personally, I like seeing that highlighted, um, pending background checks on this, pending inspections on this, I think it's a good checkoff, and if we had another list there that said, or another line that said pending, you know, compared last year's or whatever it is, to me, I know that everything has been checked off, everything's ready to go, and we have no other questions. So I like seeing this stuff.
So you, okay, and what you're suggesting is, maybe they, we actually have like a, a separate sheet, a checklist where it, where the chief actually checks off?
Sure, check it off, any comments, check it off, any comments, you know, what needs to be changed, comment?
Maybe we could get some kind of worksheet, Henry, if you think that...
Yeah, and I think that's one idea that came up, that we'll talk about in the next meeting, is maybe we have to have a cover memo on my office on these, so you can say that we've looked at them and verified this, 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 and...
How long do we keep um, applications on file?
God, I don't know, there's probably a records retention requirement, I don't know, a couple of years, I don't know, if you wanna know, I'll look.
No.
Do we know, Sandy?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It's probably not that long.
Eighteen fifty-nine or something like that?
Well, even audits, we're only supposed to keep, what, we keep seven years audits or something, ten? Is it audits, there's some things that, or payrolls are just a few years, yeah.
Okay, anyway, we have them though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, definitely.
We have last years.
Yeah, definitely.
That's all we're asking for.
Well, you know, maybe after you look at last year's and this year's is filled out, then maybe you could toss that and just recycle and maybe give you some more file room anyway. Just an idea.
Who's the department would that fall under, Henry, one of the staff girls or...
Well, it's my, my office.
I mean, a designated person?
Barb's the lead staff on it, and most of the time, I think chief gets most of his answers from, from Barb and they work closely.
Maybe she could create a...
Yeah.
Maybe she could work with you, Tim, and just come up with a, some kind of a checkoff. Cross-check.
So chief, how many of these properties, have you gotten through most of them already, or...
I've done backgrounds on all of them, there's one I'm holding, that'll come before council next time.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, we need a motion to approve this with that one additional pending, if we could put that in there?
Okay.
That the uh, the premise description be checked, pending premise uh, description being unchanged. What am I doing?
So if we say aye, it's good.
Yes, I don't, do we have a motion?
No, we don't.
We need a motion though, too.
I would move for approval, pending...
All those.
Whatever, yeah.
You got them all, Sandy?
Yeah, I do.
All right.
Sorry, that's not a very good motion, but...
Well, no, if you, if you were to look on uh, page one oh five of packet one, um, we're approving license report number twelve twenty-four, uh, pending all those things that are in, in yellow highlight, plus one additional, which is pending that the, the premise descriptions are unchanged from the previous year. Okay, and we have a motion, I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Uh, motion by Peterson, uh, motion by Fensky, seconded by Peterson, that we approve of license report number twelve twenty-four with those pending items. Any discussion?
Peterson or Peterson?
I'm not sure.
I'm not either.
I think it's an ye. It's an all! I was fifty-fifty, Chance.
I wasn't sure where, where it came from.
Steve, who cares? All right, uh, Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Eric Wilson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fensky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Scott Porchatsky?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Uh, next then, uh, let's see, we are, uh, no issue, thirty-minute discussion, communications recommendation of the mayor, uh, nothing there tonight, uh, we need a motion to adjourn, so we'll...
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fensky, that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting, which is set for Tuesday, June third, two thousand fourteen, subject to call. Um, before I let you go, don't forget we have a committee of the whole meeting that happens a few minutes after this. Uh, all in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we are adjourned at uh, seven fifty. The, um, thank you everybody for watching and attending tonight, uh, we'll start the committee of the whole meeting at seven fifty right now, so we'll start that right at eight o'clock, if you wanna just get up and stretch a little bit. Mm-hmm. Oh, I don't want to hear stuff, she says she's no good.
Want me to turn it on?
Okay.
Okay, you're on.
I saw you listening to the train, gonna be acting up for lunch, how do you have the mindset on the old path?
They do like that.
We got last week, I pulled my wife, oh, Jillian's got the two little toe hats down there, looking for the train.
You're on.
Thanks. All right, let's get moving.
Yeah, they get excited about the train.
When Scott's ready.
You gotta get one.
That's the twice I've gotten you, haven't I, last week? All right, uh, welcome everybody to our committee of the whole meeting, this is Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, it's approximately eight o'clock, I do call this meeting to order, uh, you have an agenda in front of you, I trust the roll call is the same as uh, we had at the regular meeting, uh, the agenda, Paul Mayo?
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that um, items three, four, and five all be handled at separate meetings, uh, I don't think there's anything real, really time-sensitive on here, but I think each one of these potentially could... but I think each one of these potentially could generate significant discussion. And I wouldn't want to cut each or any one of them short because we're handling them all tonight. So I would like to suggest, and I don't know if I have to make a motion on this, but if I do, I'd like to move that we take each one of these separate at a committee of the whole meeting following a future council meeting. And take one of them tonight, certainly.
Can I ask one question to go along with that? The beer and wine thing, Tim, is that part of what we were just talking about?
Not really.
Okay, all right, that's all I need to know. Okay. Go ahead, Paul, sorry.
So, that, that's fine.
So, we need, if, if you're in agreement with that, then we should pick one of the three tonight. Do you want to just start with, with the review of the Code of Ethics? Or do you find, does somebody find one more importantly? Or do you not agree with what Paul has suggested?
Do you have an estimated time in your mind what discussion would take? Or is it as we go, we find out as we go?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Get too deep, then, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess the point is, is that it, like Paul said, I mean, these, these could last fifteen minutes, or they could each last an hour. You know, so, I mean, we, depending on the discussion that we have. So we could be talking anywhere from being out at nine o'clock or being out at eleven o'clock tonight. That's my estimate. How am I doing there?
I agree with Paul. We've been here two hours already. I think we tackle one.
If they can wait, I would say so, too.
Yeah, I mean, we can, yeah. Anybody else? Paul, if, go ahead.
If we broke it down, I guess the number four might take some more time. But number five is, is pretty brief, and I would only anticipate five minutes. Really, all I want to do with that is go over what's on the back of that pamphlet, and that's the guidelines which was adopted, I don't know, eight years ago? And just wanted to see if that was still the procedure that you wanted to follow. That one would be pretty brief. I'm not saying that that's the most important one, but that would be pretty brief.
How about if we do? Why don't we table number three, the Code of Ethics, till a future meeting, maybe next month's meeting, and we do four and five then, tonight?
Seem to fit together.
Yeah.
Okay.
We okay with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
Can we do the Code of Ethics on June 10, when we have that committee of the whole? Or will that, the other thing take too long?
That's Brennan's. We're actually not going to even hold that at council chambers. We're going to hold that out at...
Well, though, we're going to move to the library.
Oh, never mind, we're going to library. We can, we'll talk about that, if we want to do that. I, I think our June 3 meeting is going to be fairly extensive, or not? You have a bunch of things going on.
And we've got a couple of stuff, a couple of things for John.
John's giving me, John's giving like seven things free.
So we're probably actually looking at probably the seventeen that we would do, the Code of Ethics?
Is it possible? Now, I've looked at ours and I've looked at the states. And even though the state is very, you know, state oriented, there's a lot of things that do pertain to us. Is there a way that we can, when we do discuss this, have a copy of the states and a copy? And we have a copy of ours, it came in the mail, to compare the two? Because there's so much that is similar there, and theirs is extremely stripped.
They heard you. They'll get her in there for you.
Thank you, whoever. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we table discussion of item number three until a future meeting, whenever that is. And limit discussion tonight to items four and five.
The motion by Mayo, a second by Olson, that we approve of the agenda with the deletion of number three, the review of, review of the Code of Ethics ordinance number three dash ninety. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carried. Let's go then to, let's do number four, review guidelines for issuance of special class B temporary licenses to sell fermented malt beverages and wine. Henry, you going to start this?
Sure. We talked about this a little bit at the mayor's meeting, last meeting, and I think chief has a little bit, I don't want to speak for him, a little level of frustration on how we come about deciding on, we'll call them picnic licenses. These are the ones, the most recent one that you approved was for Rotary to have their little annual meeting down in Rotary Riverview Park. And when you approved that, it didn't have the fencing requirement. And I think that's the main elimination. And it looks, in reading our ordinance, it looks like council certainly has the ability to decide whether they want to limit some requirements, or they could add on to them as well. And, and having some discussions with the chief on this, like the fencing issue, and, and I think, I, we may have a difference of opinion. And I think that's where maybe having a cover memo or something from my office on the application can maybe move it along quicker, and then the chief can, you know, respond. But, you know, in the, in the Rotary's case, I would say probably fence isn't justified. It's a two-hour meeting, it's in the middle of daylight, they're not charging for alcohol. It's a private get-together. Whereas Arts on the Square, and they're playing music, they're, it's dark, they're letting, they're, they're having younger people in, in the licensed area. The fencing makes a lot of, a lot of sense in those scenarios. So I guess where I would always fall down on these is kind of analyzing them in that respect. But any one of these picnic licenses, you could add other stipulations. And I know the chief, I mean, he's had concerns sometimes where these sites are, that they can be, they can be vulnerable. And particularly when they're, they're gatherings where there's music or, you know, it's a fundraiser. So I think that's something I'm sensing I've just got to do. I've been here sixteen years, and the clerk's office has never put, yeah, well, before I was city clerk, any kind of cover memo on this stuff. We've just discussed it at this level. But maybe we, it's time that I've got to, you know, do that.
Could you fill out like a checklist? And could you say, is, you know, location that's on there? Does location require double fence? Has this been waived by the chief? Everything should be checked off, and then Barb should sign it. Any questions? Immediately go back to her. Done that way, there's no, there's no question when it's brought here. You're not going to have to worry about it. We're looking at it. We know that it's been completed. We know that there are no questions.
Now, chief, you like the idea of the checklist?
Well, as long as it works. You know, part of the thing that precipitates this is that we had these meetings in judiciary, and we did, we always had these discussions at the judiciary level. So every license that came forward, we almost always had this conversation. And now that's coming to the entire city council. My concern was, one, whether you knew your authority under state statute, and what gives you, and our local ordinance, what gives you the authority to do any of this? And whether or not you would grant that. Just to make sure that this is more of an educational thing, that the council does know that you can do these things. It's always been my position, and always has been, that for these licenses, I would always ask for a fence, just to have it contained and confined, and we know what the description is. Now, beyond that, it falls under ordinance onto the council that you can require fencing. You don't have to require fencing. You can put criteria on it. If you charge, you want one. If they don't charge, if it's an event like this, you don't want a fencing, you know, that's fine. But just as long as you understand that you have that authority under the ordinance. And I just don't know if everybody on council, especially anybody that's never served on judiciary, probably isn't aware of that. So with the elimination of judiciary, that's why I asked, we have this meeting tonight to make sure that everyone, everyone understands what your authority is under the ordinance and how you want to proceed on this. How you proceed is entirely up to you, just as long as you understand what your authority is. The other option, it always seems to be a question whether or not they're going to have underage people at the event. That has to be on their request, and the last one didn't come through with one. So we can only assume that no one under twenty-one is going to be allowed there. Anywhere in the park, because they have the whole park as a description. So, and that's perfectly fine. I just, again, falling back to more informational and knowing what your role and authority in this is, and whether you want me to come forward every time and say, every time I want a fence. I mean, I understand, Henry, it makes sense to have criteria in place. Probably don't need a fence in every case. That's fine.
During judiciary, your flow chart used to help me a lot.
Yeah, that's, that's actually the next item, and that's why I want to make sure that everyone knows. That's what I've been using, and whether or not the council as a whole wants to continue that way. But that pertains only to bartender licenses, not this.
Yeah.
I'm willing to make a stab at it, chief, to come up with something for picnic licenses, a checklist, or something that can go on top of the application.
It's like, is every line filled in?
Yeah.
Is, you know, whatever.
You can give her a crack.
That's what we used to do at judiciary. We would kind of dissect stuff like that.
Yeah.
Some of this stuff gets lost now, maybe in, in transit, because it's not looked at quite good enough.
Right, and I know this has been very frustrating for you.
And that's what my concern is, judging from the, the ones that have come through, they're just, they're just going through without any discussion. And a lot of times, I'm looking at it, too, for the first time. So I'm looking at it fresh and new, too.
I think what frustrates me a little bit, as, as a council, you have the authority to discuss anything you want. This magical judiciary, I, it seems like you could talk about it just now.
Yeah, this, this item, to go along with what Henry said, I, I just made sure from what Sandy said, too, that this item was not on the consent agenda at the last meeting.
Was an action item.
So, it was an action item. So we all had the ability to discuss this. I think the points that you're making here are, are, we're leaving it up to the discretion of the chief and the clerk's office to decide. If we don't say anything, they're basically deciding for us, and they're not always in agreement. And that's why council needs to weigh in on it. Okay, it sounds like the chief would like to see this as a fencing of all events like this be fenced in. And Henry wants to be able to have the discretion to decide whether there should be fencing or not. I mean, that's what I'm getting out of this. And it's really up to us to decide in this situation. I would say if they're both in an agreement, and we like that, I think that's, that's fine. But we, we got, we, we have an issue here. So I think, at least for the time being, when we have these requests, these requests will have to come to council, and council will have to decide whether they should have fencing or not. I don't know what other items that we're talking about, either. And then we could just, we'll have history from the past year that we can work off on a lot of those events, because they're annual events. And, and we can work from there when we make our decisions in the future. But I think, for the time being, that's what we need to do. With that said also, though, I like Debbie's idea, just like I did for the other one, where you have a, a, a memo that's on top that, that tells us what we can expect at this event. And, and we have the ability to go through that and fully understand what our rights are, too, as council members, and what we should expect and do there, too.
I think that would almost take the place of like our comments in Judiciary Committee. The memo would kind of, you know...
Well, I have, yeah, the chief, sorry, Scott, but the chief brought up something that, I mean, I don't know how you're going to handle this, but if you have that business after five in Rotary Park at, what was it, five to seven? Is that what the? I mean, that's, I don't know if school's out by then or whatever. School will already be out by then, but still, if you ever drive by Rotary Park, there is anywhere from ten to thirty young adults down there. Are we going to ask them to leave so that this event is available? Because we have no fencing in this area, and they described the whole premise, the whole park, as what they want to use? And I don't think that was the intent of the, of the chamber in this. I don't know that for a fact.
Do we have something that fencing is the norm, not is the exception? And we're going to do it? That's it? We don't want underage drinking? We're going to make the decision, every single one gets a fence? And if they don't, they have to come here and try to get us to change our minds? Because that's a really good point. If you've got a bunch of people in a park, and now you've got an event coming in, how do you say to those people? And there's a lot of people at some of these business after fives. And they may allow their kids to come because they're part of the business. How do you do that? I just think we should say, that's it. I don't care who it is. A fence will go up unless you come here and explain why you don't want one.
Yeah, Deb, we did have that conversation years ago at judiciary.
Yes, we did.
And I recall that's when this was either changed or amended, where fencing, if necessary, came into play.
We should take out if necessary.
Well...
You know, because you guys are going to continue to have these back and forth discussions. What's the problem with having a fence in place all the time?
Well, that's always been my position, and try to be uniform with these licenses. That's why my position's always been asking for a fence. But now you throw in this other criteria, well, if they're not charging an entry fee, is it really necessary? Those things are all, you can put certain amount of weight to that. I understand that.
It shouldn't matter if they charge an entrance fee. If there's alcohol being served, whether it's a party, whether it's a function, whether it's a business after five, there should be a fence.
Yeah, I, and I really...
That's up to the people who, who rent this, the thing. If they're going to have to have security there, that's up to them to secure that area. But if we're talking about alcohol is going to be served, minors are going to be in the area, good chance they're going to be in the area, put up a fence.
See, I really respect chief's opinion about uniformity, but it isn't very customer friendly for council to require that, you know, where you got to get out the fence for a two-hour event. They're trying to use our parks and promote, you know, being a quality of life thing. Right now, you could rent a shelter and have alcohol, a ten-dollar beer permit. I mean, where do we go with that?
You're not having it outside. You know, if you, if you rent a building, you can do whatever you want in a building. But if you're outside in a public park, okay, legality wise, and, and what about, um, say something happened, we don't have a fence up at this Rotary thing. Something bad happens, and it could. Who's responsible for that? Who, what happens if a kid gets alcohol, they drink it at the Rotary thing? They leave, get into an accident, and they find out, you guys had this discussion about putting up a fence, and you didn't want to. Now, one of our citizens' kids just got killed. What do you do? Whose liability is it?
Yeah, and this harkens back to five, six years ago. Remember, we had double fencing, four feet apart? You're not going to deter a kid from getting alcohol with a four-foot fence. And I think that was one of the underlying reasons that this was put in there, is if somebody's really determined, no matter what we do, it's not going to prevent it.
Yeah, I know, and you shouldn't let them drink Mountain Dew, because Mountain Dew, they can put beer in a bottle, but that foams and, you know, whatever. But all I'm saying is, if we have the opportunity right now, right this minute, to save a life, and we're not doing that, what do you do? I'm not taking responsibility for something like that. Uh-uh.
Deb, I, I respect what you're saying. First of all, requiring a fence in Rotary Park for this event is assuming that Rotary members are going to be distributing beer to children. That's not going to happen.
How do you know?
You have to have some faith in the common sense of the people that are attending this event.
You also have to be realistic, Paul. It's not like when we were kids. The beer, the liquor, it's not eighteen anymore.
What about the case where you give them a waiver for our creation? Request a waiver, and then you say, sure, now you've got kids in there anyway.
What do we do then, John? You know, what do we do? It'll deter it.
Then you have to say, oh, there's no fence, we never have minors, that isn't the point of it.
No, what I'm saying is you should have a fence, it's a deterrent. I'm not going to say that they're never going to get in there.
And you can't have minors in there.
I'm not saying that they're never going to be.
You just said, you aren't going to have minors there because you don't want them to get alcohol. If you give them a waiver to have underage people in the licensed area, what are you asking for?
If they're giving, all right, we're going to, if we're going to give them a waiver, they've got a fence up, right?
Or not.
Okay, say they've got a fence up, it's our requirement, they're going to have a fence up. It's their responsibility, it, it's off of us.
It's always off of you, just because you gave a license doesn't mean you have any obligation to people who are handing beer to minors over there.
I, I think what you end up doing though is, is with something that's ironclad like that, Rotary's just not going to have their event, they're just not going to do it. Uh, there's other service clubs in town, uh, you brought up Arts on the Square. Um, you, you, you have that beer tent where they're all fenced in, they're kind of imprisoned and that's not where the art show is. And it would be nice to walk around, I'm not advocating a drunk fest on Main Street, okay? But it'd be nice for adults to walk around with a glass of wine or a beer and observe the art, observe the, observe the exhibits and, and do that in a relaxing, controlled way. Uh, you can identify, you know, people that are borderline 21 with, or actually identify all adults with wristbands and you can police it that way. But it's a severe handicap for people holding events in this town. Uh, you have Strawberry Fest, uh, Arts on the Square and, and, and I don't know what others there are, maybe that's why we don't have any others. But Iowa Old Car Show, Manuel Rodeo, um, Oktoberfest in Appleton. They're all drinking on the street or drinking on the grounds, there's fenced-in area. And I'm not saying that that's been a perfect situation all the time, but as far as I know, there's been no major issues associated with those events at all and minors drinking alcohol. Maybe that, I'm, actually, I'm surprised if it hasn't happened, but it's, it's not an issue.
Do you want to see no fence at all?
Yes.
Drinking in the street?
I, I'm not saying no security. I'm not saying no security and no identification of adults. You, you have to do that and, and you have to be careful who you're serving alcohol to, but I, I would, I would not, I, I would be in favor of removing the fence requirement. So.
I got a question. Do you think these groups, I don't know how much security is, but do you think they'd be in favor if we said no fences, but you have to hire security to check, you know, and kind of keep balance, checking for minors drinking? Would that be a better deterrent and is that something you think these events would go for? If we said, if we take down the fence rule, you have to hire security? Is that an option?
They did it at the fire dance. They still had minors drinking, they had the fence, still had minors drinking.
So the fence didn't do anything?
You know what they did? Friends were throwing it over the fence, way down in the fair court, so, you know.
So what's, what good's a fence then?
I don't know, deterrent? I just don't want somebody to get hurt when we could have done something to stop it.
That's why I'm saying the fence isn't going to be checking these minors or, or watching their friends throw beer over a fence. I'm saying security is going to keep an eye on that sort of thing. That's why I thought maybe that'd be a good option. Have to have security. And I don't, like I said, I don't know what the cost of that is.
I just want to point out that one, two, three, and four can all be waived by the council. If you look at number five, you can waive any of those sections. So, because that ability is there, the checklist isn't going to do any good. The council could come back and, and once again say, you don't have to have a fence or you don't, you can permit minors. So it's really all up to the, the council according to that number five.
Yeah, so why, why take it out? I mean, if we have the chance to waive it or not waive it, leave it in in case we need it, don't just get rid of it.
Well, all I'm saying is that don't require a fence.
Right. And leave the waiver in, you know.
That's fine.
Then we'll have to come back like the mayor said, or like judiciary did, discuss it.
An action item. Tim might have a cover memo or be, feel very strongly, we need a fence. My office may say something contrary on it. And you gotta decide, I mean, no, no hard feelings. You know, it is what it is, you know.
That's why we're here, yeah.
Are the forms always filled out correctly?
Well, I don't know, we've had some trouble with the underage waiver, but now I think I'm getting it because when you, when you have it on a licensed premise, you don't, you know, somebody walk in there now anyways, an underage, with a parent. But it's just picnic licenses, you gotta specifically ask for it.
So I, no, that wasn't my question, are they filled out correctly all the time?
I don't know that they are all the time.
Do you have questions on them when they're not filled out correctly, Tim?
I mean, I'm quite sure I follow you, what do you mean, not filled out correctly?
Well, Peg is saying we don't need a checklist because we can do all the stuff. What I'm getting a little sick of is when we come to these meetings and you've got questions and you've got questions and we've got questions, why aren't they all answered before they get here? Hard is this?
Well, I think, and I would endeavor to do this and say this publicly, I think the chief and I need to meet on this stuff before you get it. And we don't do that. And I think you meet with Barb and you communicate with her. And then I come to the meeting and I'm not sure of all the details because I'm assuming things are fine. I shouldn't assume that, right? But I, I think maybe as a normal course, when we get these licenses, maybe we can get together and we might agree to disagree on the fencing issue. But at least we can say we talked and met about it and we know each other's feelings about it. I think that, we should, we should consider doing that.
Well, to respond to that, I, I'd rather have it be a decision of council because I'm always going to ask for a fence. And the main reason that there's a fence is to delineate, define, and describe exactly where the location is. Because when we go by, we know, well, there's a fence in the area, we know that that's where the alcohol is allowed. By having it so open and indiscriminate, that's where we run into questions. Whether it's on Main Street blocked off by a barricade or, you know, past 100 block of South Main Street. The fencing is really just, the purpose of that is to define and describe where the alcohol is going to be.
Chief, I understand that and, and I understand your reasoning behind that. However, other events in the county don't have that clearly defined small area. And as far as I know, maybe you know more than I do, but as far as I know, it hasn't been a major issue for years and years.
What has it been?
Iowa Old Car Show, Manuel Rodeo.
They have a huge, huge drinking problem at Iowa Car Show, it's huge.
With minors?
Absolutely.
Okay, you know more than I do.
Yeah, that's, that's why they have 10, 15 deputies assigned there every day and every night. But that, I'm not comparing ours to that at all.
Okay.
And again, if you guys are making that conscious decision, then I'm perfectly fine with that. But I, the purpose is this, I want to make sure that you know that that's out there for you guys to decide on.
I don't think anybody wants minors drinking and, and I certainly don't. And, and I'm not suggesting that we facilitate that at all by what we decide here tonight or in the future.
Right.
So, all, all I'm looking at is, is, and all I'm saying is to require a fence in every case, I don't think is the right move. If we want to review each request for a temporary license or a picnic license, or whatever it's called, we can, we can look at each case on a case-by-case basis and make a decision on that. I think there are some groups that will ask to be exempt from the fencing requirement and we can decide that as a council.
That's exactly what I'm asking for.
Okay.
Exactly.
I'm fine with that.
Well, I think that's why it's here tonight, to tell you the truth, because when we had this discussion at the last meeting where we okayed it for Rotary, I think some of us just assumed that there was a fence around it because there's always been a fence around it. And others didn't think that.
And right or wrong, I guess I assumed you knew what it was because you get the same thing I get. You're looking at the exact same thing I get. So I guess I assumed you have looked at it in detail and understand all that, but like you said that night, these documents are huge, you know, 250 pages long. Sometimes.
And I wasn't here at the last meeting, so, you know, I guess I'm under the, I go by what you guys say. You, John, Peg, Jeannie, you guys are the experts in your area. I have to go by what you say.
I think to maybe address Chief's, I'm thinking back at one we did recently, like when the curling club had that learn to curl night and they came in and, uh, they had like a perimeter, it was like 20 feet around the building or whatever and Chief was concerned about that. And then you narrowed it down, we had an aerial in our packet and it was basically that concrete pad off the door. A little smoking area that, and the ramp area was where it was allowed outside. Now that clearly, they were in a building mainly, so that probably eliminated the need for a fence, but sometimes the premise descriptions just word is a word, you know, is text. And it's hard to maybe get it, so maybe we gotta try to have a map, a little bit more detail on, on, on that.
Well, we.
So the chief can enforce it, so he knows clearly what's approved.
We enforce premise descriptions on our professionals that know what they're doing and have an on-duty supervisor, operator on at all times. And we limit their premise descriptions, but here, where people are doing it as amateurs and we don't require premise descriptions. You know, I, I, I see a, a different, I mean, I, I think all the more important, I think Peg said it best and we all read this before too, is, is that it's up to the council to decide this. And so, we need to have a, this was a good education for us. We need to fully understand what we're voting on. We can't just make assumptions like we probably made at the last meeting. If we're okay with not a fence, okay, we all know that we're not having a fence. We might not agree with it, but the majority of the people voted in favor of not having a fence, we're okay with that.
Is, is that what it is, there's no fence? I mean, you were, I wasn't here, so.
There is no fence.
But I, but I think I will relay to them.
Oh, you got them, Ross?
To address your concern of, of the park issue is that it's basically, you know, confined area and I can get something, I'll have them draw something up that they will agree to stay to a certain area or something, even though it's post-action on your part. So it's, they're not going to do it, but let's put something on paper. I mean, they're not going to carry beer down to the playground. I mean, they're going to stay, I'm sure, under the pavilion there and in the grass around the pavilion. But we could come up with a little map or so, make it real clear, you don't come over this line or something, you know. More accurately defined with that area, that makes you feel more comfortable.
Does it work like that when you had, just rent a pavilion for a class reunion, a wedding, a family get-together? Like, do all those people put a fence up around it every time they do that?
I think you, it's a pavilion area. That's a separate ordinance.
Separate ordinance, okay.
And that doesn't come before council, that's issued by the parking wreck department directly? And no, they don't require fencing at all, it's.
But it is the physical, uh, pavilion, isn't it, Chief?
I believe so.
Yeah. And that defines the area, yeah.
Is that that, is that that covered area with the picnic tables in? That's where all the kids hang out, that's their hangout.
Yeah, so you better get somebody from Rotary there early and get them out of there.
Well, he's not talking about now, he's talking about what Dave just said.
Oh, okay.
Dave was talking about weddings, family reunions, and they get a.
They see how it's any different.
They get a picnic license from the Parks and Rec Department.
The young kids will stay away from the old timers anyways.
Remember the box fire thing?
Yeah, they define, we had that aerial and there was a map and it was very clearly defined for the police. It was basically the paved area.
That was a regular license for the whole summer.
Right, but. Right, but the area, the premise, there was a, an aerial in it. Really nailed down.
We are only talking about right now temporary licenses, which we have, what, a dozen of them each year?
Maybe.
Maybe?
If that, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe once a month.
Yeah, we're not talking about, uh, the Class B regular liquor and beer license, which are the, our taverns. We're not talking about the picnic licenses, we're just talking about temporary licenses that are given to, and they have to be nonprofits, organizations to even get this temporary license.
Yeah, I guess you're right, Mayor. If we say picnic, we're referring to the $10 parking lot. I've been using, I've been using it for temporary.
For this one, here, they call it a picnic license.
They do.
So the Parks and Rec picnic licenses, yeah.
That's not the same as the parking wreck.
No. And that's what Dave was asking, if it was the same or not.
I don't care what you say, I don't think there's anything wrong with it. Just that half the time those applications get out, it gets to the bottom of it, they didn't ask for a waiver for underage people, they really want. What do you want? And then you have to amend it, it doesn't get filled out right. And that's for part of the problem, that when the application gets here, half of the information is.
Thank you.
It'd be very difficult for them to fence in that whole freaking park. It costs them thousands of dollars. So I can see how that wouldn't be very practical for the application, they want to have. If it was in the building that wasn't a licensed premise already, pretty easy to describe the premises and you don't have a fence. But if you're selling beer at Strawberry Fest and somebody's making money off it, you better fence it in because that's the tavern for the event. You don't need people all over Main Street for beer. And I agree with, but that doesn't mean every single event you gotta have. We get a picnic license for the people with the, what's the art thing on the corner where they have the stuff in the.
Phantom Art Gallery.
The Phantom Market. And they give them about three slots, they don't make them put up a fence, put up some, a barricade or something, but it isn't exactly a fence and they give them a license. That makes sense, that makes sense to get off the old slatted fence, put them up. Very short period of time, but every incident, out of sight, out of bounds, half of them don't need a fence, therefore need a fence, pretty obvious, some aren't obvious. Get the information at a time. She says, oh, and I don't think this ordinance is very good. Because the discretion with, all the time. Very seldom you're going to waive most of those requirements. They have security, they not have a bartender, they have, or an operator, they're, they gotta have it, especially if they're selling, they have somebody checking ID, check ID cards, you need a fence.
All right, I will concede on the fence thing, but I really, really, really have to insist that when anything comes before this council, the paperwork is filled out correctly.
Well, part of that could be that we ask, and I think this happens most of the time anyways, that we ask the person that is applying for that, attend the council meeting where we have that discussion. I mean, that would go a long ways to help answer some of these questions. I mean, it puts a little bit more effort on their part.
Regular licenses, you have the same people year after year after year filling those things out and they want, they know how to fill out. Picnic licenses, it might be the same organization, but it's a different officer, they don't know what they're doing. I mean, they do, and they don't read regular licenses. Halfway in, expect Barb to, if it's done right, then we get all the answers on it.
So maybe that's something that we get out of this, that we, that we require that the applicant attend the council meeting where we're going to discuss this. Again, I, I think that's, that's a good idea. Again, I, you know, the.
I do, I said the.
Most of them do, most of them do, but.
Agenda, they get an agenda.
Yeah, but I know we've been sitting here asking questions with nobody here.
Yeah, most of them do attend, but I think if we make it a requirement that they do attend, that will go a long ways to help us. And I think, uh, if, if, if the clerk's office and the chief have questions on the application before it gets to us, they can get to the applicant ahead of time and, and try and correct some of those things too. That would go a long way to help us too. The other thing, I, and again, I, maybe I misunderstood what this number four discussion was going to be, but the discussion that I felt it was going to be was is that we want to all be on the same page here. We want to all, when we agree on something, we want to make sure that we're asking the right questions. Okay? And the chief's point was is that we didn't ask any questions. And, and after, after we okayed it, we all had a misunderstanding. And I, and again, I go back to the fence. I don't know that I agree or disagree with the fence, it depends, I think, on the situation. But in this case, I felt that there was going to be a fence there because there's always been a fence there. I mean, I've been on city council since 1996, we've always had fences unless you ask us not to. And the Phantom on the Square asked us not to have a fence. And that's the only time I ever remember that we didn't. So I would assume that there was always. So I would assume that there was always a fence. So now we're going to decide at council level whether there's going to be a fence or not. That's what this discussion was supposed to be about tonight, although we got a lot of other things out too at the same time. Okay? Anything more on that? Clerk's office, chief?
Was that an ordinance? Fences were always required? And then it's changed a few years ago?
Well, when did it change? What was it saying? It was amended, I think, at some point. I don't know that. I don't know that it was ever an ordinance, but to tell you the truth, but I know that the council, when I first got on, was very.
Oh seven.
I want to see what it says now.
Always wanted to make sure that there was fencing. And not only one fence, but they wanted double fencing around that. Looks like we changed it maybe, maybe in '07.
We can waive all we want.
And right, and Deb, I'm not offended if I ask for a fence and you don't want to have a fence. I take no offense to that.
I am, I agree completely with you that I think there should be a fence. It gives you easier, all you have to do is say to the guys, okay, here's the printout, this is what they're going to do.
But you have circumstances like business after five, which is different than selling. I understand on that, so. I guess the bottom line is I want the council to make that decision and not me. And me not always having to say every time it comes up, well, I object to this. Because that's kind of the history that this process has taken on.
Well, yeah, okay. This has probably been beat up pretty good. I think the other thing that we talked about too, that's really important to all of us is that when something is on the agenda, you always, always have to, you always have the opportunity to ask questions about it and pull it off the consent agenda if it ends up there. If it's on the regular agenda, you have every opportunity to talk about it. I don't care what committee it's in. This is the committee now. This is the judiciary committee now. So if you discussed it at the old judiciary committee, discuss it here. It's the same thing. There is no difference. So if you have questions, ask. And we'll get them answered that way. Then everybody's on the same page. All right, anything else on number four? All right, let's move on then to review guidelines for issuance of operators' license. And chief, you want to?
Yeah, if I could, on the very last page of that packet, you'll see kind of a guideline that was set up and approved probably eight years ago by judiciary at that time. And I don't know if everybody in council's actually seen this, but this is a procedure that I've been using. There's no hard, fast rules on when to deny a new bartender's license. This is something that I put together by looking at other agencies, looking at what they've done to put some kind of a structure to how we look at these. So when any new bartender's application comes through, when I do a criminal history check or check C cap, driver's license, this is a flow chart that I'm basically using. And so when one is, jumps out at me and that is kind of pulled from the regular packet for approval and it comes to council, basically what I'm saying is it falls outside of these guidelines. And I'm not, and I shouldn't be making a recommendation, and I haven't recently, to accept or deny. I'm just telling you that it falls outside of these guidelines. And under state law regarding discrimination, you can discriminate. And you can discriminate if a person, they're making an application for a license and if that history is substantially related to the activity that they're applying for a license. So alcohol, it's generally accepted that any alcohol-related offense is probably going to be related to bartending. Also, drug violations. And these opinions usually come down from the municipalities and those are the guidelines that I use. If they have a drug offense, it's very closely related, substantially related to activity in a bar, consider that a violation. Some of the other things, battery, disorderly conduct, if they are drunk, intoxicated at the time of their arrest, it involves alcohol. Generally, that is an accepted practice that it's substantially related. It tends to show an abuse of alcohol. So those are the guidelines that I use and these are the guidelines that everybody who sat on judiciary was pretty familiar with, but I didn't know if everybody on council understood this. Also, before licenses issued again, we just started this, I don't know, a few years ago and we discovered it, that if they have an outstanding fine or ticket, anything related to a municipal citation, that license is denied. Although it may come to council for approval, it's pending their payment of that payment to the city or fine.
You know, that's a good hammer.
And it works.
It does, that's been a good procedure.
And I'll tell you, there is one that's going to be coming next, either, I'm going to try to get it to the next city council meeting where an applicant has filed for a renewal on a bartender's license while he got his fourth drunk driving arrest this year, this licensing year. So that'll come forward and this is going to fall outside of this guideline. And again, the ultimate decision is going to be council and whether you feel that those events, those violations are substantially related and whether or not you want to issue a license to that particular person. Now, some of the people that have come forward that have said, in judiciary, smaller groups, and they argue, well, I need a job, I need a job. Well, they can still work at any given bar, they just can't be the sole, they can't be the only license holder in that establishment. That's why I want to make that clear also. Because sometimes they try to, you know, tug at your heartstrings to say that they need a job, they can't get employment anywhere else. But that's the reason that that would be denied just for the license part of it. They could still work at a bar, many bars, taverns in town, they only have that one licensed person on duty at any given time. So that's the significance there. Like a QuickTrip, almost everybody there is licensed, so if they hire one or two that aren't licensed, it usually isn't an issue. So I guess I wanted to find out if everybody on the council was comfortable with this flow chart, if you wanted to see something changed. Because this is generally what I use. And like I said, you probably haven't seen this as a council before, this flow chart.
The, when we've had applicants recently, this flow chart has not been in the packet. And this is something that I don't think I can memorize. Is this something that we include in the packet or do we post it on the wall so we can go look at it when we're having a discussion?
On your desk. Keep it on your desk.
I had it on my desk when we would do judiciary because it really did help. It was a really good flow chart. I'm a definitely flow chart procedure type of person and this was great.
And again.
Yeah, that's what I think. Right. Then we know everybody has it.
Tim, don't you also, if somebody lies on their, if they're not truthful on their application, you lean towards denial?
We pulled that option off because it was too complicated.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't.
Change some wording on the application. So they really can't lie. They just affirm that they're going to be subject to a background check and that the council can deny. So we shouldn't get any more for lying.
Well, that's news to me, so that was good to know. I hadn't heard that. Because that was a bone of contention many times on judiciary committee.
There still are some counties that don't contribute to C cap. So, I mean, we could miss out on those. I don't know how many there are anymore. Portage just got on not too long ago, so.
I think, Tim, you had a applicant, just since I've been on council, that recommended denial to, and I think you put in a couple reasons in your backbone.
Right out.
We understood that.
Yeah, I do identify those violations. And again, these are just guidelines. There has been times before at judiciary level that they've approved ones that have fallen outside these guidelines and that's your role, that's your call.
I think you gave which one of these things was.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll try to make sure that that gets included too. Because I prepare several memos to the applicant and common council, so I'll make sure that I also include this too when those do come forward. But I guess my main question was whether or not everybody is comfortable still with this flow chart, if you will, just to kind of give some guidance. If you think it's too strict, usually it's more than two, as you see more than two violations within three years, so three or more. And typically on ones that are renewals, of course, I only look back the one year.
It's good. I mean, I guess I forgot to, I mean, when you look at it, you have the one where if you do have the incidents, are they minor in appearance and then do we look at those on a case-by-case review? And I think I forget that part of that too, so it's good to see this.
Yeah, and I guess that's when it comes here and that is really a case-by-case review.
All right. Anybody else have any questions on that? Thank you, chief, for that review. Anything else for the good of the committee of the whole? Anybody need a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
If you want to.
Okay.
We have a motion by Kealan, second by Hackett, that we adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Brewers are losing five denunciations in the bottom of the eighth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, for security, we're adjourned at 8:52 PM. Thanks, everybody, for attending.
Thanks for the update. 91F, Terri TV.